Staff at the 111 on Saturday? Phil, look, you walked away.
Yeah.
Down to the pledge ceremony?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening. Good evening. I will now call the regular planning commission meeting of Tuesday, July 18th to order, and I will ask the clerk to please call the rule.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Chair Klein.
Present.
Vice Chair Rudin. Commissioner Wilkerson. Commissioner Fortney. Commissioner Fergus. Commissioner Lightfoot. Commissioner Banta. Chair, we have a quorum.
Very much, clerk. Everyone, please stand for the pledge of allegiance, and I will ask Commissioner Lightfoot to please lead us in our salute to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Ralph. We will now move on with regular business, starting off with staff communications. At this time, I will ask staff if there are any communications or announcements for this evening's meeting.
Thank you, Chair Klein. There is one email that was sent after the commission's packet was made available, and a copy of that's on the dais for each of you, and it's an email regarding North Village, and staff will touch on that during that item. And that was the only correspondence that was received. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Morris. Okay, so we will now, our next item is approval of the evening's agenda. This includes the continuance of the Dutch Bros public hearing item as shown on the agenda under item 7B. If there are no changes, do I have a motion and then a second to approve the agenda? Moved by Commissioner Fortney. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Commissioner Lightfoot. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Commissioner Wilkerson. Commissioner Fortney. Commissioner Fergus.
Yes.
Commissioner Lightfoot. Commissioner Banta. Vice Chair Rudin. Chair Klein.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Nancy. Our next item is the consent calendar. We will have one item on the consent, which are the minutes from the June 10, 2023 meeting. Does anyone from the commission or the public wish to pull the consent item for discussion? Actually, scratch that. I skipped over this from the floor. This is the item to address the commission with issues that are not on the agenda that are within the commission's subject matter jurisdiction. Maximum three minutes per speaker or group spokesperson per government code section 59, 54954 dot 3 subdivision A. Vacaville Municipal Code, section 2.04.130. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the planning commission on any issue that is not on the agenda. There will be a limit of three minutes per speaker. At this time, I welcome anyone who wishes to address the commission regarding a topic or issue that is not on the agenda this evening to please approach the podium and do so now. If you could just please state your name.
I am a Mills, oh, I can hear me now. I'm a Mills Lane resident. The topic I would like to speak with is, first off, I hear in the, this is for North Village, and this is for Plan Two or Plan B, and you guys are setting aside an area to put a school in, and that is absolutely wonderful. Okay? There was a school promised for the Phase One. It didn't get put in because of some kind of airport. The planes were flying over, and the airport was there first, I guess, you know?
Just, I'm sorry, one, so we do have North Village on the agenda tonight.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
For Plan Two?
Yes, area Plan Two, ma'am.
For the area of Plan Two. Okay, then I'm for the school, and I can speak again when Plan Two comes up?
Yes, this is the business from the floor. Anything that's not on our agenda tonight, welcome public comment on that.
Okay, so the schools-
Otherwise, you can reserve your comments for, if you would, for the item that's going to be item 7A.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Please come forward to comment on anything that's not on the agenda. Any item that's not on the agenda, this is the time for business from the floor.
Hey, my name is Paul Schechter. I've been a member of the Vacaville community, worked here and lived here for over 40 years. And what prompted my appearance here is I am very disturbed by the proliferation of high-density housing, particularly notably the Peabody Apartments, as well as many others around town. And so I called my representative, Mr. Lightfoot, and we met informally, and he suggested that I appear and make my comments here. So I have two concepts that I want to bring, permission.
I'm sorry, Paul, just a sec. Can we reset the clock? I don't, okay, you have three minutes, sir.
Okay. First of all, carrying capacity. Every entity, whether it's an airlines, a lifeboat, or a truck, or a city, or town, or a village, has carrying capacity. This room has carrying capacity, and Vacaville certainly has carrying capacity. And my concern is that we are near, at, or perhaps have passed carrying capacity in Vacaville. And the first thing that we will notice is that our quality of life will be diminished, and ultimately, it will threaten our very survival. I am very concerned with number and the kind of high-density apartments that are being built in Vacaville. The concept of transit hubs and high-density housing is no longer valid. People are not traveling to San Francisco the way they were pre-COVID. Bar is at 32% capacity pre-COVID. People are working from home, except for people who are poor and middle-class, who must appear in person, such as teachers and construction workers, et cetera, et cetera. So I believe we have approached or passed carrying capacity in Vacaville, and I think if we continue to build high-density housing, it will be a good way to destroy the character of our town, not only the character, but the existence of our town. That's the first concept. The second concept is home rule. The California Legislature, in its wisdom, has seen fit to take the power of planning away from this commission and take it up to the legislature, and they can impose, and they are imposing, and have imposed, cookie-cutter planning for every single community in town. And I hold that we, you, are closer to the people and know better how and where we want to build. And even if I strenuously disagree with your decision, I would want it to be your decision and not the decision of the legislature. Those are my two points. You have any questions? Comments? Okay, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. I hope we can move forward in a more deliberative-
That is not on the agenda, to come forward now. Seeing none, I will close, I will close business from the floor. Move on to the consent calendar. So we have one item on consent, which, we have one item on consent, which are the minutes from the June 20, 2020, the June 20th, 2023 meeting. Does anyone from the commission or the public wish to pull the consent item for discussion? Okay? Do I have a motion? Moved by Commissioner Wilkerson. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Fortney. Will the clerk please call the rule?
Commissioner Wilkerson. Fortney.
Yes.
Fergus.
Same.
Commissioner Lightfoot. Banta. Vice Chair Rudin. Chair Klein.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Clerk Tolson. So our next item is item 7A. So tonight, to avoid any potential conflict of interest, I'm recusing myself from participating in Agenda Item 7A regarding the North Village Area Plan Two, because my residence is located in the area close to the project. I will leave the meeting dazed until, and I intend to join the audience, speak as a member. Vice Chair Rudin will take it from here.
Good evening. This is item 7A, the North Village Plan Area Two Public Hearing. We will first hear a presentation by the staff, followed by commissioner questions. After that, we will open it up for public comment, and then bring it back to the commission for discussion. May we please have staff's presentation for this item?
Vacaville Planning Commission, the item for you tonight is the North Village Area Plan Two project. This is, this is coming back to the commission for some changes, so there is a bit of a refresher to give. North Village is this area outlined on this aerial map, shown in black. It's bound by 505, Vacavalle Parkway, Leisure Town Road, and Midway Road. North Village was approved as a master planned development community in 1995. It's encompassing 880 acres with two planning areas. It's approximately 2,500 residential units of single-family and multifamily. There's commercial, business park, public college, public elementary school, site for private swim club, public parks, and public open space. This is the illustration that was approved with the specific plan, showing how the area is divided. Areas in blue are business park. Purple are the college and the school site. A variety of different tans and orange colors representing residential developments with a commercial site over at the intersection of Vacavalle Parkway and North Village Parkway, and then large portions of green in the middle area that represent open space. So we mentioned before, there's two areas that are, that represent North Village specific plan. Area Plan One is roughly 370 acres of land with 1,348 units. There are single-family detached homes, as well as multifamily apartments. There is a commercial site with business park area, open space, there's a public park currently there now, Cordero's Park, and there was a site for a public school site that's no longer there. Area Plan Two represents approximately 470 acres, 1,151 units, also single-family detached homes and multifamily, large portions of open space, a site for a public park, and then also a site for a private swim club. Approximately where the boundaries lie for Area Plan One, Area Plan Two, residential development within Area Plan One is largely almost built out. On the business park area has not been built yet, or a portion of it has been built along Vacavalle Parkway. The larger portion along North Village Parkway has not been built yet, and there's a portion of the college site that's been developed, but this is mainly about Area Plan Two that has not been developed yet. So as we mentioned, this plan is from 1995, and so the developer, Discovery Builders, is requesting to make some changes to that Area Plan Two. These are comprehensive amendments that would affect the general plan designation, as well as zoning map designations. That's their first request, is to change those. They also want to reserve an 11-acre school site in the Area Plan Two, originally identified in Area Plan One. They would like to extend the development agreement by 20 years until 2045 to allow them to construct and build out Area Plan Two. They'd like to increase the overall unit count by 100 units from 2,499 to 2,599. They're looking to do comprehensive amendments and updates to the North Village specific plan itself, to update exhibits and different development standards. They're also requesting to obtain a vesting tentative map for Area Plan Two. This isn't the first time this project was brought before the commission. Back in September 2022, we held a public hearing, and the planning commission at that time made a recommendation 5-0 to recommend approval to the city council. So we moved on to city council in October. We held a public hearing. That item was continued to address comments from city council. After the applicant had some time to address those comments, we brought that item back in December '22. But that item was, again, continued to a future meeting. City council identified four areas, four topics that needed to be addressed by the applicant, involving the timing for constructing the apartments, provisions for inclusionary housing, provisions for a private swim club, and disclosures to future home buyers about the school site, as well as the apartment site. With those changes, the applicant took the project and made some changes, and in March of this year, they resubmitted the project to address city council's direction, which also resulted in some other modifications to the project. And so that's why we're here tonight, is that the changes that were provided back to staff constitute a significant change that needs to be brought back to the commission for review and another recommendation. And here's what those changes are. The apartment site was relocated. It was moved south to address city's council comment about wanting to see the apartment site earlier in the development of public improvements, so that way it could be readily available for someone to come in and build apartments. The school site was moved north to accommodate that change. It's still located next to the high-density side where the apartments are, would be, as well as the park site. The orientation of the lot that would be for the school changed from a rectangular, a square shape to a rectangular shape. There were about 2.4 acres of residential low density that was transferred to residential low-medium density to accommodate this apartment change. And then there were infrastructure updates that were identified in the vesting tentative map, showing how the arrangement of street layouts would work with these plots of designations being moved that also affected the circulation, lock configuration. And so the developer needed to update the vesting tentative map to reflect that. These changes don't affect the specific plan or the development agreement and all those terms that were previously brought to the commission. These changes mainly affect the general plan map, zoning map, and vesting tentative map exhibits. This is the general plan map exhibit that has changed. This exhibit on the left-hand side is the original one that was brought to planning commission that shows the residential high-density site. And then you can see on the exhibit to the right, it was moved south. The school site, originally located along Leisure Town Road, was moved interior to the site, again, straddling the park and residential high-density sites. The companion map to the general plan is a zoning map that identifies different districts and how development standards would be laid out, but it needs to be consistent with the general plan map. So the zoning map exhibit was also updated, and you can see that the large change here is the residential site was moved south, and the school site was moved up north. Staff looked at the vesting tentative map and did a comparison, the development standards for the specific plan, as well as comparison, and to make sure that they're complying with city standards. There were a number of additional conditions that were added to the project as a result of this change. Condition number 25 requires the developer to provide a masonry wall between the apartments and the single-family detached homes. Condition number 28 requires the apartment site not to provide primary access off of North Village Parkway for safety reasons, but provide secondary access off of collector streets that would front alongside. Condition number 29 requires the developer to provide a masonry wall between the offline detention basin, as well, between the offline detention basin and the detached single-family homes. Condition number 30 requires a masonry wall between the residential homes that are along north, along Leisure Town Road. And then condition number 59 added some traffic circles and other calming devices at certain intersections as determined by the city's traffic engineer that were necessary for safe intersections and for our safe travel. The applicant made these changes to respond to city council's direction. The first topic was timing and construction of the apartments. City council expressed a desire to see the apartments moved into a location where it would be built, it could be built earlier. And so what the developer did was move the site for the apartment, so that would be, it would be located within the first phase of development. It would be able to take advantage of the public improvements, street access, access to sewer, water, storm drain, so that way, in the event that there was a builder that wanted to come in, they'd be able to do that as part of the first phase. The second topic was related to the provisions for inclusionary housing. City council wanted to see more portions for inclusionary housing, restricted for not just one particular range, but wanted those ranges for affordable housing to be spread across all three spectrums of moderate, low, and very low income. And so what the developer decided to do was increase the number of units that would be allocated for affordable housing from 75 to 100 units, and then disperse them among- and then disperse them among the different income categories. These units would be either accessory dwelling units or junior accessory dwelling units, not the primary residence. And for clarification purposes, the director mentioned that we did receive a public comment concerned about the development of 100 market rate or 100 affordable apartments. The apartments themselves are advertised, as it's been explained to us by the developer, that they're market rate. These 100 units that would be restricted for these different income categories would be accessory dwelling units, either attached or detached, or junior accessory dwelling units that would be dispersed among all the other single-family detached homes within that Area Plan Two. They wouldn't be isolated into one particular area. They'd be dispersed. City Council wanted to see more assurances that a private swim club could be built within Area Plan One. The applicant's proposal is to add provisions that would allow a private swim club to be developed within the business park area and Area Plan One. And the City Council expressed a concern that airport restrictions would eliminate that, would cause issues. So what planning staff did was we took a survey of a couple of private swim clubs to see what their densities looked like for inside as well as overall at any given time. And we also looked at a public Three Oaks Swim Club to see what the density looked like out there. And what we found was that the densities for these private swim clubs largely remain very low at any given time just because of the amount of money that is associated with those memberships, while the public swim club had a very large density associated with at any given time during, for the attendance at that swim club. So the restrictions for indoor that are set by the airport would be no more than 50 persons within a building per acre and no more than 75 people outside at the entire site. Based off of what we could survey from the other sites, there wouldn't be an issue with density that a private swim club could still achieve the density restrictions imposed by the airport. There was also an added condition, number six, that requires the developer to conduct significant outreach with existing homeowners to survey the interest with having a private swim club within Area Plan One, or sorry, within Area Plan Two. And so that's written as part of the conditions of approval. And then the fourth topic that City Council identified was adding additional disclosures for home buyers about the timing for developing the school site as well as timing for development of the future apartment site. And so there's exhibits within the staff report that show what the signage would look like installed at both of those sites as well as the model home complexes. As we, with all projects, we work to identify what the types of benefits might be for the public for projects. In this particular case, we identified a number of benefits, including this particular project would provide a school site within Area Plan Two. There's a number of missing middle housing units, approximately 170 duets that would be provided with this project. There's additional right-of-way along Midway Road that the applicant is going to be providing to the city. The changes to the land use configuration as compared to 1995 are better because it would move the park into a safer location instead of having it fronting along a major arterial its interior to the site. And then the school and the apartment site would be located next to the park, giving double joint use with the school and the park as well as easy access and close access for individuals staying in the apartment. The applicant is also proposing to add more land uses to the business park, which increases viability for development. And project also includes a turnkey park for the neighborhood park that also includes a new dog park, too. A recap on the environmental assessment. The original assessment done for this one was certified in 1995. It was an environmental impact report. And what's California Environmental Quality Act says is that when you have a change in a project, you have to measure what that change looks like to see if it's going to result in a significant impact and then figure out what that significant impact is. That's under section 15164. It's called an addendum. And so that's what we did for this project to measure what that change was. And we found that the measurable difference was the increase in the 100 units that the applicant's asking from 2,499 to 2,599. What we found was that there was no significant change resulting from that additional 100 units because there was a reduction in the amount of development density that could be done for the business park because of mitigation measures from that original environmental impact report. The additional changes that the, includes a variety of housing types. So with that, staff has a recommendation for the Commission. By simple motion, recommend that City Council adopt the subject resolutions for the items identified and also introduce subject ordinances for the items identified. That concludes our presentation. Staff's here to answer any questions. We also have the applicant here to help clarify any questions regarding the project as well as our city's traffic engineer to discuss anything related to traffic and the city's consultant that we worked with on that addendum, Stan Tech.
Great. Thank you very much for your report. Do we have any Commissioner questions?
Thank you. For disclosure, I want to get it out that I did have communications with the applicant prior to our meeting. Thank you, Albert, for the presentation. My question to you is going back to the slide with the income thresholds for moderate and low incomes. Do you have those dollar amounts available for us and for everybody either watching or here tonight? Or Director Morris, would you have that information for us so we, everybody can kind of get an idea what the income is for those units?
We'll find that information, Commissioner Fortney, and have that after we take public.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Do we have any other Commissioner questions? At this time, I'll open it up for public comment.
There. Oh, whoa. My name is Tonya. I live in North Village. I actually live on Twilight Street where I look out at the retention basins. It's a beautiful view. I hear him talking about no environmental impact. However, adding 100 additional units is going to be a quality of life impact on those already existing and living in this community. Find it very frustrating to find out. In the pamphlet, there was no clear wording on the low-income housing. It just stated, unless you went digging for it, we were like, what's going on? Besides low income with the new development, I've lived there nine years. And so having the new development off to the northwest portion has already impacted us, those of us that have lived there for a long time. We have people drag racing. We have people tagging up the new walls along 505. There's been an uptake in kids around the retention basins near the well, which kids will be kids, and I'm glad they're outside and not on video games. However, I'm just concerned about an additional 100 units because you're adding people. And although it may not environmentally impact the ground, it's going to invite, it's going to quality of life impact the residents. And I find that a little disturbing as well as you're catering to people who don't live there by building a school, putting an apartment complex next to it. And yet, the people who live there now have been waiting for this school, and it sounds like the priority is for people who don't live there yet. Are your, the current situation be, priority should be residents who live there, and the school should be for those people. Yes, there's already a plan in place for 2,499 units. That's what the school should be planned for, not an additional 100 units for people who are not there. That should be the focus. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Do we have any other public speakers?
Hello. My name is Matt Byrne, and I live in the North Village community, kind of near the new development. I originally, originally was going to speak on Area Plan Two, which I thought included the little carve-out and I think Exhibit Five. It's kind of relevant to the, the school planning that's going into the planning. But I was a little disturbed to hear that one of the motions that was made was to extend the development project, I think, to 2045. And it seems like that doesn't really serve the interest in the media. And not only that, but it also creates a sales tactic to build and bring in more people. I know when we moved in, I think about a year and a half ago, one of the big selling points was there was going to be a school developed there. Hearing that it's going to be pushed back an additional 20-plus years makes it kind of irrelevant that I would move there in the first place. I think the city of Vacaville can agree that the schools are currently pretty overwhelmed with the amount of students that are allocated towards youth school and that a new school is necessary or more schools are necessary for the growing population. I don't think that pushing it back a little further shows commitment to the development of the site. I think it just pushes it down the road, which will ultimately result in, you know, potentially another filing to push it down the road again. I think it's kind of up to the Planning Commission to kind of put the foot down and say, we need to see more commitment out of these development projects to see that it's going to go forward at a certain amount of time, or else it just becomes another sales tactic. In that same zone, that little black area that's cut out, I'm kind of concerned, too, about a potential battery facility that's in the works or potentially going to be in the works. I don't think it really serves the, the purpose of this plan, too, to put people and kids right in the middle of it, considering the, you know, the lithium-ion battery storage facility that could be potential hazard nearby. I am for the school and I am for the development of an area for green space and also to further the, the different open areas for the community. However, I do think those two projects conflict. And I really do think that the Planning Commission needs to take a harder look at allowing that energy company to come in and develop that area right next to a project that's been in the works for quite some time. I do think that they're conflicting in nature. And even with the best safety and suppression systems, it really doesn't equate to being an add value for the city over this Area Plan Two. That's all, all the comments and questions I have. If you guys have anything, I'll be, thank you.
Next speaker?
On, oh, okay, I guess I am. Okay. So again, I am Pam Behringer. I am Mills Lane, 23 years. Love it there. It's nice. It's quiet. We have our animals. We have our critters. We have our crickets at night. What we don't want, we want a school. I would much, much rather deal with school traffic than the sound of HVAC units trying to keep lithium-ion batteries cold so they don't catch fire. I'm about 650 feet away from that project. This will take my grandchildren's inheritance away. And I don't know if any of that really matters, but I know that sodium is a much better alternative. The batteries can stack on top of each other. They don't have to be cool. I am not against not saving energy, electric vehicles. We don't know enough about that yet.
I'm sorry, can I pause you for a second?
Sure.
Can I have direction on this because this is not the topic on hand? This is a different project.
Okay. Yeah, the battery storage is not on this evening's agenda.
Okay.
But the project, North Village Air Plant Two, is.
Okay. So Air Plant Two sits right next to an area that a lot of us are concerned about. I do have a question. I would imagine, oh, I direct, okay, I'm sorry. Okay. So in their statings, they said that they were going to notify the potential buyers about the school and the park. I would like them to notify them also and put the battery in there, too, so potential buyers know that, what they're going into. And then I want to know, why do they need a private swim club when you're planning on putting a $2 million sports complex right around in that same area? It, I don't know. You know, it seems like a bunch of charbon to me, and I kind of like my home. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. And questions, well, staff's taking notes on your questions and they'll address them afterwards. Do we have any other speakers?
This is Bob Dunn. I live on Leisure Town Road, right here, right next to Plan Two. I'm actually here about the school. I think the school is a great idea. I think that's something a lot of people in that area have been looking forward to for a long time, since Plan One. It's almost like a joke around Vacaville. I'm sure that there's not enough schools around for elementary school kids. There's nothing on this side of town at all right now, currently. So I, I would say that this seems to be the most important topic that you guys are facing is putting in the school. But another thing that caught my ear while I'm here is the high-density housing. I'm not going to make a comment on that necessarily right now. But I think for the sake of the people that are already residing in the area, I think there should be a little more outreach to the, to the people that live there, kind of like some of the people we were talking about earlier. I think outreach would be a good thing for, for the current residents in the area. And, you know, you might get some good, good information, good, good ideas with something like that. A lot of good feedback. But as someone said earlier, it wasn't really very clear on that topic. So like I said, I was here more for the school, but I wanted to make up a comment about that, that just doing a little more outreach would be a really good idea when it comes to that. That's kind of a hot topic for a lot of people. That's really all I have to say right now. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other public speakers?
Hi, my name is Sarah Dunn. I just wanted to make a comment, kind of to piggyback on Bob there, that the, the flyers that went out to the community didn't really specify what kind of housing. It just said high-density, multifamily. It didn't say low income on the paperwork. And so I think that outreach probably would be a better idea to reach the people that do live there. It will definitely affect them and, you know, and they can weigh in on, and what they feel like, voicing their concerns or comments about that. But I also wanted to, to just comment that the school is super needed in the area. It's obviously a big concern for families, and it's probably the number one thing I hear from parents when I'm talking to other parents in Vacaville, is that there's no school and they have to drive their kids across town to go to school. It's very frustrating to hear everybody complain about that. And here is a school site that's been promised but hasn't actually taken shape yet. And I know that doesn't fall on you guys. It goes to the school board. But hopefully, that can be looked at in a way that it could be expedited. And one of the first things that could be looked at. And we are getting some new school board members, so it's not out of the question that people on the school board could potentially try to do something with that, that lot. So I just wanted to speak my support of the school. And I feel like that, along with the swim club, should be kind of a priority just for the people that already bought their houses there and are looking forward to those amenities, and they don't have them. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other public speakers?
Hi. Just a few brief comments. First, I think that all the comments that were made tonight are important. I, I think that's emblematic of the fact that the outreach has not happened leading up to this project. The outreach is a, is a common issue that gets brought up here. I think I went to one session that was advertised, and I met with Doug Chen. But that was the one time that I've spoken to him, and I shared my concerns. I think that there's a balance here that we're close, but we're not there yet. I think, as presented, there are internal inconsistencies. To the extent there's a need for affordable housing, that need is right now. So I think extending this 20 years is problematic because markets are created by time. So if people are going to get affordable housing, they don't need it in 20 years. They need it right now. And the other issue is that this is, the original project was approved in 1995, and a lot's changed since then. And that's not to say that there's a shelf life for EIRs, but... And that's not to say that there's a shelf life for EIRs, but there were assumptions in that EIR that I think are maybe missed, we missed the mark here. Importantly, I think that the option for the school is not going to solve the problem that's been brought up tonight. People have spoken in support of the school. That's not the subject matter jurisdiction of this commission, but it's an important issue that I don't think is going to be helped by this option. I think the option is problematic because if you want a school built, but you have this back door to building more units if the school's not built, I don't see that sort of, you know, putting the schools first as a priority. I think that if there is a option, like this problematic one, that if the school elects not to be built, that we are going to build more housing, you're actually going to, this is an area that's subject to environmental justice impacts and the people that live in this community have public health issues. So having them in their cars, driving all around town to schools is not going to help to solve this issue by putting in 100 more high-density units. So I think this kicks the can down the road in a way that's not going to help this community-wide issue of a school. So I, the quality of life issues aren't lost on me in that way because this is a community-wide issue. So I, I think, I, staff's worked hard on this, but my recommendation would be to spend more time doing community outreach, maybe try to button up the school issue to make it more certain for people so that people can know what their investment, how it's going to change. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next public speaker?
My name's Brandon Stocking. Just a clarifying question. In the staff report, it says that we'd reserve, I'm sorry, increase the total allowable units from 2,499 to 2,599. And then it says the additional units would be possible should the school district elect not to acquire the reserved school site. I'm just trying to see if that's still accurate today or if that's part of the revision. Is it either the school or the 100 units or is it now both? Just a clarifying question. Thank you.
Thank you for your question. Staff will be able to answer that. Turn your mic back on.
Evening. I'm Doug Chen, representing North Village Development, the developer. And I can speak now or wait until you have questions. I'm trying to catch some of the questions right now if I, if I can.
That's fine.
Yeah, just answering as many questions as possible. To the question on moderate income, that's not exceeding 120% of the area of medium income. For example, let's say a household of four, in Salona County, say a median income is $100,000. So moderate income is not to exceed $120,000. I'm not saying that's, no, Salona County's area of median income is $100,000, just using as, as an example. And lower income would be not exceeding 80% of that. So the ADUs, the accessory dwelling units or the junior ADUs were proposing, they're not apartments. They are basically junior masters with a separate entrance and cooking facilities within that junior master. So it could be a one-bedroom, you can look at it as a one-bedroom apartment or studio, but it's contained within the residential lot. So it's not a separate apartment complex. I want to make sure that's clear. And the, the owner of the, the house with an ADU or JADU, he can elect to rent it out or not to rent it out. If he does rent it out, if it's de-restricted, then it cannot be rented out and the rent exceeds the affordability level of either moderate or lower income, whichever category is de-restricted to. As far as the 100 additional units concerned, that's within the school site. I know if Albert can put up the location of the school site. The 100 units are allotted out within the school site. And so if, once, and VUSD, we are reserving the school site for the school district. VUSD is a completely separate governing body. They make the decision as to whether to take the site or not to take the site. If they take the site, obviously we don't get 100 additional units. So as far as environmental impacts concerned, that was studied in the, in the secret documents. And the 100 units, additional units, regardless of whether we get it or not, that's something that's in the development agreement as, as exists today, that in exchange for the developer providing certain college improvements way back, now decades, in, we get to request, we may not get it, but we get to request 100 additional units. The battery storage site, that's not part of a North Village project. It is adjacent to the North Village project, but we don't, we don't own the battery storage site. It's the old wastewater treatment plant. The city owns the site. The private swim club, as, the general plan exists today in Area Plan Two, there is no general plan land use designation to accommodate a private swim club. And that's why we're trying to fix that by making the Area Plan One Business Park, the expanded use to allow for a private swim club. And we're going to do outreach with the North Village residents, whether it's Area Plan One or Area Plan Two, to see, to gauge your interest if people are willing to pay for membership to operate a swim club. Again, as a private club. Let's talk about outreach. I did, the developer did a in-person meeting at North Village. We sent out notices to, with all the residents within North Village, plus 1,000 feet. And in addition to that, the city conducted, conducted a Zoom meeting too. The 20-year extension to the development agreement, that's to allow AP to Area Plan Two to be built out. It doesn't mean that we're not going to start until 20 years, you know, 15 years later. In fact, we're starting now. We're, we're doing the design for, to extend North Village Parkway to widen Midway Road. We're doing the infrastructure design right now. That's, I think I, hopefully I caught all the questions. I'll stand by for any additional questions.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Do we have any further public comments?
Hi, Lindsey Kelly, not actually in North Village, but adjacent in Allendale. Obviously, as a north city resident, I kind of second what everybody else has said. You know, getting a school in the area is super important to the residents out in that side of town. We don't have anything out there for our students. I do understand that that's a Vacaville-unified issue. It is very concerning to understand that the developer may ultimately end up with the site that's been set aside for the school that's been promised to our neighborhood, to our community for so long. And I would like to understand a little bit more, if somebody can speak on it, about what terms would need to be met in order for that site to revert back to the developer and what would be needed by the school district or the board, of which I'm a candidate currently for that district, that trustee area, to actually ensure that that project can move forward and that it doesn't just revert back to the developer, which I think would be an absolute travesty for the people who've been out there waiting for that for so long. And then kind of as an aside, again, also not exactly the issue, but the lithium ion thing, if that's been factored in to the potential for being able to even have a school site there, if they're not doing a new EIR, is that, has that been factored in as to whether or not that would even be something that, you know, the school board would allow for a school site in that closer proximity? So even though it's not directly related to, I think that it would be helpful to understand if that has been considered so that we would be able to, to understand that.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other further public comments? I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to Commissioner Delibery and provide feedback for the staff. And before we do that, because I'm... You need to, you have to come to the podium, so everything needs to be caught on the microphones for public record.
I know, I'm supposed to look everywhere.
I need to open it.
Asking him as well.
Hold on, I need to open public record back up.
I'm sorry. I did, I did have a question about the timeframe, the 20 years. That seems like it's a little excessive. But I'd, I'd like to hear what people have to say about that because for the amount of homes, I've seen other developments go up and it seems like 20 years seems a little excessive. I would say that a minimum of half of that, if not less, seems reasonable. I'm kind of curious what people have to say about that, especially the developer. Because I, maybe I'm wrong, but like I said, just based on what I've seen around, that's all.
Great. Thank you for your comments. And I will be closing public comment and bring it back to commission. Before we do that, does staff answer the questions first?
That's the vice chair's preference.
Want to do that? Listen to it?
Sure. On the development agreement, I'll defer to the applicant to explain the complexities associated with how long development takes and how long it takes to build out. On the public outreach, the applicant mentioned it, but I'll provide some further context. We had two neighborhood meetings, one that was facilitated by the developer, that was in person, one that was facilitated by planning staff. And then today marks the fifth public hearing. That notification was sent out and each of the notifications, 1,200 notices were mailed out for each of those. On, on the concern about the clarity of the different affordability brackets in the public notice, we can elaborate on the next public notice that the 100 units are broken up into different categories. As far as the description of the apartments, it's not common that we would mention whether they're market. It is common that we would mention they are affordable. And this particular census project is not proposing affordable apartments. The applicant has described to us that they would be market-rate apartments, which already, which, for context, in Area Plan One, there are the villas at North Village, which are market-rate apartments. So that's a comparable type of project that you might see for Area Plan Two. On the school site or the 100 units, I think the applicant clarified that it is either or, that the school district and the developer have an agreement that says that the developer is obligated to show how residential lotting would look like over the school site in case the school doesn't develop a site. And that's the reason why that is shown on the tentative map. The applicant can talk about the complexities of how the property might transfer to the school district. That would be his area to talk about. Oh, and just to echo what our director mentioned is that the, and the applicant, the battery storage project is not part of this project. It's a separate item. It's not even a project yet. I think that answers the bulk of the questions.
Great, thank you. Mr. Chen, would you like to come back up and answer any other questions?
Thank you, Chair Rudeen. On the development agreement, 20 years seems excessive. You got, we have to keep in mind that this, we have about 1,200 units. The, you know, we tend not to sell our lots. A lot of other master plan developers, they do a master plan development and they sell half of their lots. We tend to build our own. We, we acquire the land, we entitle the land, and we build our homes from start to finish. So we're, you know, we're just counting on 20 years, including some economic, you know, factoring economic downturns. Let's say you have one to three years of recession and there's, you know, barely any building, which we wouldn't do, we'd just keep going because, you know, with the city of Vacaville, they know that even in economic downturn, we still keep building. We just keep the same pace and go, no, 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 slow and steady. So that's what we're asking for 20 years. We may, we may be fully built out before 20 years, but, you know, we need to factor into some slowdowns. As far as a transfer of the school site, we, I have been discussing with the school district already. We've been in discussion for the past, what, two years now, how we're going to transfer the site. And they have other sites which they don't need. We may very well do an exchange and to, you know, to make the transfer easier for VUSD's original cash payment. So that's in discussions right now. And I guess that goes back to the 100 units. Albert mentioned that we do have an obligation with our agreement with VUSD to lot their partial out to show residential units. So, you know, I don't know what the rationale is, but that's our obligation under our contract, under our agreement with the U S D. So, you know, the U S D has expressed a strong interest in the site. I believe it was over a year ago, they took it to the board and the school at North Village is one of their top priority projects. Available for any additional questions?
Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to start taking commissioner comments. Commissioner Lightfoot?
So I was wondering, is there, is there a timeline for the school to act on that site?
No, we don't have a timeline.
So at what point in development can you choose to build units instead of a school? Anytime or?
So once we have the, the map, the final map recorded showing the lot, that lot is reserved for the school. So it ties it up until they either decide to acquire the site or release it back to developers.
Okay, Commissioner Wilkerson?
Thank you. Couple of questions. First of all, thank you, Seth, for the presentation. Thank you, public, for coming out. Regarding the school site, I see that it's been changed. Are there going to be more feeder streets? I believe that, I just want to make sure that's on record, more feeder streets to allow for less traffic because you don't want just that school site all on one street and that it's going to, the impact of that traffic of that area. Can we, can you touch on that quickly briefly?
Yes. Albert, do you mind showing the school site? So one thing that when we relocated this apartment site in response to city council comments, they want, they want the possibility of the apartment site being built sooner rather than later. So we shifted the apartment site further down south to get it, because what we're doing is we're constructing from south to north. So, you know, the further south you are, the more likely that it's going to be built sooner. So in that, you can see the RH, that's our apartment site. And the, the, the school site is just to the north, the rectangular. And we made sure that we had, the proposed site had, had, has at least as much street frontage as the previous site proposed. So the circulation is no, perhaps maybe even better than the previous. It's, it has frontage along three sides and then half of frontage along the fourth side, along the park.
Okay, thank you so much for that. I believe the number, and I just did some quick math, but of, of this AP two, and if you divide it out over 20 years, it's probably like 70 homes a year, right? And so typically a building is 70 homes a year. I don't know at what scale you're able to do that or how quickly you add or not, but that, that's a feat, right? Would you not agree that that's, that's a task to undertake?
We, we feel pretty comfortable with that and that's what we, we have been doing in AP One. There, when times are slow, maybe 50 units. When, you know, times are good, there's more. But we never, you know, we never go more aggressive because we, you know, we like to, you know, just keep it steady.
Yes, okay. And on that topic, I remember when this, this, this project was brought to us last time and... And, and on that topic, I remember when this, this, this project was brought to us last time and I was a yes vote for it. The school district representative was here. And there is a need in Vacaville, everyone, everyone knows it. But the issue was for the school district, and it was a school district issue, there weren't enough elementary school children in the area. That was made very clear on public record by the person representative of the school district. And so my question to him was, how do we get more? And his answer was, they would need more units. And so it's like, it, it may feel like a catch 22, right? Because we want the site and we know there's a need, but the school district representative was telling us, I can't give you a site there, we can't commit to a site, was his words, unless we have more units in the area. And so right now, I think the last time he came, that, that the amount of elementary school students was 300. That number's going to have to drastically go up for the school district to be able to say yay or nay on that site. And not to, you discussed a land swap with the school district, is that correct, but a potential outcome?
Yes, that's one of the possibilities.
I, I would just like it known that the district has done that multiple times. And so they go and grab a school site, they hold on to it. Oh, we don't have a need yet, let's, let's go over here. And so a lot of times up here at Planning Commission or at the City Council, we get yelled at. We get yelled at because you designate a site. But then that site gets pushed off to the school district and school district's saying, no, not right now. Enrollment or whatever the case may be. So I just want to make it very clear, in order for that, for AP2 and the, the North Village area itself to get more elementary students, they're going to need more units. And so at the pace of 70 a year, you know, hopefully you can be a little more aggressive and we can get that, that school site up. In regards to the apartments, I would like to make sure we don't commit any fair housing laws and that the apartments are notified as well that, of the potential school site. A lot of times we focus on homeowners. But I don't think everyone throughout their entire life was ever always a homeowner. Sometimes you were apartment owner and so, or apartment tenant, so as a tenant, you could just see vacant land and not know what's going there. And so I think it would be mindful to make sure that everyone is notified. Let's just not make it for homeowners, let's make it for the apartment people as well. Because an apartment, a tenant may say, I don't want to live next to a school. The same way that some people say, I don't want to live next to a battery storage unit. Does that make sense? So that would be, that would be my ask and that would be my condition I would like to see somewhere in the verbiage of just making sure and also not breaking any fair housing laws regarding the notification of that for the apartments. Let's see, while you're here. In regards to the private, private swim club, how soon, let's say, goes well tonight, goes well at council, how soon do you guys plan on going to the commercial area and saying, yeah, let's go with the private school site? Like how quickly will we be starting that notification in that survey?
Yeah, if you're referring to the swim club, in one of the conditions approval that where you need to do initial survey outreach with the, the entire, entire North Village, all the residents within North Village within 180 days. To at least assess what the initial interests are, if, if it's even feasible. So again, it's a private swim club, so there will be a membership fee associated with it. You know, open to residents in AP1 and Area Plan Two, both.
Who, who would be responsible for building that swim club?
If there's sufficient interest, and we, we would, and, but that would be part of the, the membership fee.
Got it, okay. That's all my questions for now, thank you so much.
And then on the question on the USD, I think you were talking about, you know, the, the transfer and, you know, enough sufficient students. So there, the USD is also talking about a, maybe a K through eight school. So that's, again, that's entirely up to the school district, whether it's going to be elementary, K through eight. The enrollment, it's not just for kids within North Village, it's, you know, they determine the school attendance boundary.
Great, thank you, do we have any other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Fortney.
Thank you. Couple of questions, couple of comments, stay Doug, you might have to answer them, staff may be able to.
I'll stay with you.
I'm going to jump on Commissioner Wilkerson, talking about, I'm going to give him the leeway that his math is correct, that you're looking at about 70 units for a full build out of 20 years. That's just in your project, what are we building, at our peak, what were we doing, two, two and a quarter? How many units a year? Director Morris?
Citywide, we've averaged somewhere a little above 350.
So it's highly, that's why the development agreement is staggered out for 20 years, so I just want to get, put some, you know, put some meat onto that, so that's why you're needing the, the timeframe of 20 years and that's ideally for a typical development agreement, because we're typically doing 300 units in an entire city and we're asking you to do somewhere around 70 if that all works out for you. We're in a unique spot here that this project was a 5-0 vote the first time it came to us. It's coming back now because council asked for some additions. It looks like you've done a pretty good job accommodating all of those concerns. The school site, again, it doesn't solve anything and doesn't get a school vertical. But we understand this is the first step in that and it's refreshing to hear comments from the public that you understand where and who's in charge of building that school. And I think a lot of us here will champion you when that time comes outside of this dais to another one. But this is a good start to identifying the, the school site here. Quality of life came up again this evening. Whether it's you, Mr. Chan, or staff, can you tell us the threshold on, my understanding is we're getting a turnkey park, are these residents are getting a turnkey park? So tell me what the amenities are to the park, who's paying, picking up the nickel on that park? When will it be started and completed or at least started and we have an additional two acre dog park, correct? Albert, you want to take that or applicant?
I can, I can take it. So on the, the turnkey park just basically means that the developer's going to design and construct the park. As opposed to pay impact fee, so the city's current structure is, any developer, the fee, the impact fee structure is that you, you want to build 100 units, 1,000 units, whatever it is, you pay a park impact fee. The city collects the fee, the city designs a park, city builds a park. That's how the park was built in Area Plan One. But the complaint was, the concern was that it takes too long for the city to build a park and, you know, the residents working, you know, complaining not, not having a park. So staff's request from us was to, you know, to, to have the park be designed and constructed by the, us, the developer. We would pay the impact fee, but once the park is done, we would get the impact, the portion of the impact fee back, not the entire impact fee. The portion of the impact fee that's allocated to a neighborhood park, that's where this park is, we will get that portion back. On top of that, city wanted additional enhancements, they don't just want the, the typical city neighborhood park, they want more. So in our development agreement, we agreed to provide a park subsidy roughly about a little over a million dollars. So let's say the park impact fee is for the neighborhood park, for, you know, for this size park is, say, $3 million or 3.5. We would build a park that's cost more than that, you know, a little, little over a million dollars more. And, and the dog park doesn't count, so the dog park is separate. The dog park, we're, we're designing and constructing the dog park as an extra benefit.
Okay, thank you, what triggers what the park gets started on this Area Plan Two? Because you're right, in Area Plan, Plan One, that's what we heard is how long it took for the residents there to get their neighborhood park. So what timeframe are we looking at in this new phase?
The, the trigger for this is, I believe, the, the exact number is 582nd Building Permit. Little, that's about, a little less than half, 50%, half built out and has to be done, the park has to be completed within one year.
Okay, thank you. So my other comments is that going through the findings, it looked like all the findings comply with this, the city's general plan goals. You as the applicant with direct, from direction from council coming back to us have addressed all of their concerns regarding the timing of the construction of the apartments being moved up into the beginning of the project phase, construction build out, the provisions for the inclusionary housing, the private swim club, not to mention all the disclosures and notices that will be made for the home buyers in the sales office, so. And no new environmental impacts have been identified with these new changes, so it looks like a nice project, thank you.
Do we have any other Commissioner comments? Okay, well with that, I just want to second what Commissioner Wilkerson and what Commissioner Fortney had said. I think this is a fantastic project. As, you know, if anybody pays attention what I say, I appreciate the diversity in the housing, that it's not just single family homes and apartments, you're, you're targeting that missing middle that so many cities desperately need because you don't go from your parents to a single family home. And you, you know, you need that missing middle, and so I greatly appreciate that that's being addressed. And with that, I will entertain a motion.
You can make me do the honors.
But
City Attorney, am I allowed to, will you accept a motion, the recommendation as proposed? Or do you want me to go through it? If you need me to go through it, I'll go through it for the record.
I have a first for, for Commissioner Fortney, who's my second.
I'll second.
Okay, second, Commissioner Vargas.
I, I think you need to go ahead and make the motion for the items that are listed out. Would be, you can look at that.
I got you, I'll make the motion. You good? Okay, by simple motion, recommend that the City Council adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Vacaville considering the North Village Development Agreement, Final Environmental Impact Report, and the Addendum to the FEIR. Finding that no subsequent EIR is required pursuant to Section 15162 of the California Environmental Quality Act. Guidelines based on the substantial evidence included in the addendum and reaffirming the North Village Development Project FEIR for the North Village Area Plan Two, project located east of Interstate 505, south of Midway Road, north of Vacavalle Parkway and west of Leisure Town Road. APN 106280060, parcel number 10624029, 1030 and 33, parcel number 10627022, assessor parcel number 13303033 and 34, and adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Vacaville amending the general plan by changing the land use designations for various properties in the North Village Development located east of Interstate 505, south of Midway Road, north of Vacavalle Parkway and west of Leisure Town Road. APN 106280060, APN 106240290, 1030 and 33, APN 10627022, APN number 13303033 and 34. And introduce an ordinance to the City Council of the City of Vacaville amending the municipal code by changing the zoning map for various properties in the North Village Development and adopting a Second Amendment to the Annexation Development Agreement by the by and between the City of Vacaville and North Village Development, Inc., relative to the property owned by the North Village Development, Inc., located east of Interstate 505, south of Midway Road, north of Vacavalle Parkway and west of Leisure Town Road. APN number 106280060, 106240290, 1030 and 33, assessor parcel number 10627022, parcel number 13303033 and 34. And adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Vacaville approving the specific plan amendment and best tentative map for the North Village Area Plan Two project located east of Interstate 505, south of Midway Road, north of Vacavalle Parkway and west of Leisure Town Road, APN 106280060, 106240290, 1030 and 33, 106270220, 13303033 and 34.
And with that, may I please have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Wilkerson?
Yes.
Mr. Fortney?
Yeah.
Senator Vargas?
Yes.
Senator Lightfoot?
Yes.
Senator Banta?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rudy?
Yes. And the motion passes with a 6-0 vote, thank you. And Chair Klein will now return to the meeting.
Okay. We're back on. The next item, the next item is Duspero's and multi-tenant commercial building has been continued to the August 15th, 2023 meeting. With that, we will go to item eight. We'll now have the director's report, Director Morris, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair Klein, so this is our July report, a few updates on recent and future City Council items. On June 27th of this year, it was a very fateful evening, the council not only adopted the budget, but they also approved the housing element, safety element, community health policies, and the Land Use and Development Code amendments. So that was, that was a big evening for the planning team, to say the least, and the council. And then upcoming on the immediate agenda, there'll be two items that might be of interest to the Planning Commission. A study session that was requested by the council about objective design standards. And that could actually lead to things coming back to the commission for some informational presentations. And then also the council will be having a study session on digital freeway billboard signs as a result of a proposal from a particular billboard operator to convert some static signs along 80 to digital. So two items of interest, both touching on land use, and that is all I have for council updates, next. Tendative schedule of future Planning Commission items, you can expect the Villages' Advanden Development Agreement Amendment coming to Planning Commission next month. And this is a, a time extension, so we'll bring that to you with a public hearing and all the other stuff that goes with that. And then the Montessa project and the Bright Sky project are vying for whether or not either of them is going to make the August meeting, but we're working with those teams, they're working with us, and so one of those might be on the August agenda or both or neither, depending on how it all turns out, so. The future is very clear, as you can tell. And then on the next slide, I'm going to transition over to our Assistant Director, Josh Montemayor, to talk about building division activities.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners, I'm going to slide into our monthly division reports, starting with the building division. So as you can see here, the month of June varied across the board. And though you can see there was an overall decline in building permit activity, we did issue many new permits that have increased the housing production. This includes 65 new single family homes, and this is an increase of 49 from the previous month. And most noteworthy was the issuance of South Town Apartments, which adds 236 new housing units. So our revenue generation increased by 8.2 million compared to the previous month because of this large project intake, so you can see a correlation between large projects and a spike in revenue. So since we are in our mid-year, thought it would be great to give you some data to recap what's happened between January to June and our six-month average. So to give you a broad picture of how much activity goes on in the Community Development Department, our bottom line figures show you that the total fees collected, we generate about over 18 million a year to date, and that's approximately 3 million taken in each month since January, and this is reflective of the number of building permits issued for both residential and commercial. And even though we have been down a full-time building inspector, our inspection team has completed over 6,000 building inspections. And that's an average of about 1,000 inspections a month, so the building department has been able to maintain that level of service. And, you know, the, the coming months, we do expect more big projects to come in, so even though you might see a decline in overall building permits being issued, we have a bunch of large projects coming down the way. So here's some building division activity trends, again, I just mentioned this in the previous slide, that are, we are trending downwards into a number of, number of building permits being issued. But as predicted earlier this year, this downward trend has been predicted, and even though it's a steady decline, there's been no dramatic dips. However, solar permits has dipped, and I remember Commissioner Rudy asking about this question, and we have studied it, and it looks like since the incentives for solar permits have been removed for rooftop solars, which was, I think, implemented in mid-April, we've seen a dramatic decline since that, because those that Because those that were pulled were grandfathered in previous to March. So that's why you saw a huge uptick of folks pulling their permits before March. So hopefully that now paints a clear picture of what happened. But now that skewed the trend, our housing over, our number of single family permits has increased while the solar permits have decreased. So you no longer see that peaks and valleys, so this might be a trend going on forward. I'll slide into the current planning monthly report. Activity within the planning department in the month of June comprised mostly of miscellaneous reviews and inspections for residential and commercial improvements. Some noteworthy projects, however, include a new ADU in District One and the approval of villages that vandon to in District Six. And lastly, we have the advanced planning monthly report. Advanced planning also has been going through the final stages of the adoption of the housing element project. So that includes the safety element and community health policies and goals, as well as the 2023 annual land use and development code update. But coming in the future months, we have start implementing our housing element programs. And there's a bunch of programs that we intend to implement by the end of Q3 and Q4 of this year. So we'll have more updates of that in the incoming months, but staff is creating individual work plans to implement those programs of the housing element. I'll turn it back over to Director Morris.
Sorry, two more announcements on the topic of building inspections. Because we've been down a full-time inspector since last November, the backlog for building inspections is severe. I just want to let everyone on the commission know that I'm well aware of it, as is our city manager, city council and all of our staff. We have hired someone who will be likely and hopefully starting at the beginning of August. We've also found a retired annuitant who's coming out of his cabin to come fill in a couple of days a week to try to help us catch up. And we also have some private developers actually funding the city's hiring of additional contract inspectors to come in and do a little bit of catch-up. So I just want to let you know that we're aware it's a crisis, we've got all hands on deck, we're pulling in any resources we can find. Because if a single family homeowner wants a water heater permanent inspection, I don't think they should wait 30 days, none of us do. So we're trying to fix that. The second thing is that a couple of the planning commissioners will be joining me and planning manager Vivand at the planning commissioners training that's being hosted by the Solano Planning Collaborative later in August. And I'm really excited, it's the first one of its kind. And if you can't attend, please don't worry, all the materials will be captured and shared with the entire commission. So, and those were the only other remaining announcements I had. Oh, Andrea, oh, except for Andrea's poking me, here we go.
Don't really have a place on the agenda to make announcements, but I wanted to inform the commission that our legal office has finally filled a long-term vacancy that we've had with Ms. Nancy Astian. She comes to us from the city of Tracy, she is a graduate of UCLA and Whittier Law School. And she's joined us, she's going to give a lot of help out with the land use and community development issues. So you'll be seeing her frequently because she's going to be staffing the commission for you. And I would encourage you to reach out to Nancy if you have any questions about complex or Brown Act issues. She'll primary legal support for those things. And I will also, following tonight's meeting, send all of you an email with Nancy's contact information so you know how to we're super excited and you are in very good apt hands and you will love working with Nancy. And she might teach you how to play pickleball if you ask her nicely.
Andrea, does that mean that you're offloading us?
I wouldn't call it offloading, but I'm going to give, give the police department so much needed support that they've been waiting for. And, but we'll all be working very collaboratively to ensure that the community development activities are fully supported. Thank you.
Well, it's bittersweet to, I guess this is your last meeting then with us.
It's not my last meeting, I am not going anywhere.
Okay.
Nancy's going to help out with staffing these meetings for the time being. The city attorney's office, the city attorney has decided to designate specific departments to attorneys. And the idea is that, you know, assignments will continue to rotate. So you will be seeing me again and perhaps Attorney David Naum again. And we still have another vacancy, so even maybe else that we don't know yet, so.
Perfect, welcome Nancy. Commissioner Wilkerson, did you, can this wait till commissioner comments?
The building permits and the ADU slide, can you go back to that for me? I, I had someone reach out to me and so I want to make sure, so the six month average is less than, is less than one. What's the, what's the average time process that it takes to get, hey, I want to do an ADU? Here's your ADU, what's the, what's the timeframe on that?
An ADU is processed through just the building division planner view process because it does not require discretionary review by planning or by the planning commission or the city council. So once it's submitted, our plan review times are typically like two to three weeks, three weeks sometimes for the first round of review. Once the plan review concludes and all the departments have put their comments in, those are compiled and sent to the architect or homeowner. And then really the time that's, that happens from those comments being issued when they resubmit is extremely variable. But once it comes back in, it goes back into that plan review for its, you know, up to three weeks, final plan review. Hopefully it's final at that point. If corrections are not made, it could go into a third round of plan review. But the idea is that we typically are reviewing plans in three week intervals. So at the end of it, it, once it's issued.
Okay, and so we're, we've only seen five completed though, right? Year to date, we've only had five ADUs in the city limits?
That have been issued their building permit since January of this year.
Do we have more in the pipeline of people trying to work on them?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions about the mid-year totals? Thank you. Okay, so we will, now it's time for commissioner comments. This portion of the agenda for commissioners to inform each other of items of potential interest to other commissioners such as interagency meetings or other announcements as appropriate. I will start off with Commissioner Wilkerson.
I know Vacaville American Little League is, is playing tonight at seven o'clock. So good luck to those boys who are out there playing, I hope they win and continue on. It was nice to see the swim club option in AP two being discussed and those homeowners having a say in a choice. And to be able to say that they would like the option to partake in that. And so I really appreciated that part from the developer and allowing those homeowners a, a say in that, because that's been a hot topic along with the school. And lastly, just on a personal note, my daughter has been playing soccer through the city of Vacaville program and it's an excellent program, city of Vacaville, you guys at Parks and Rec doing a great job. But she's been doing soccer and so she's so excited to watch the World Cup. And so we spent it out some time and we're going to sit there and watch it together. And so I just, you know, a lot of time I'm taken away from her, not allowed to always be there on those things. But we put, put aside some time and it was, it was, it's important obviously to spend time with your kids. But it was even more important to me when we're looking at the roster and she says, Daddy, can I play soccer? And I said, of course you can baby. And she said, Daddy, that child, that girl looks like me. So that really hit home to me because that was one of the first times that she saw reflection in the sport, other than the normal sport to watch in the house, that she saw someone that looked like her that gave her an opportunity to identify that sky's the limit. Reach for the stars. And so that's why it's so important for me to her to connect and watch them frankly, I hope the girls, you know, the national team gets a three-peat. You know, they, they've won the last two, keep it going. And there's something to be said, you know, when you, when you watch that and you see those, that USA on the front. When you sit there and watch those, those sporting events and the world champions is coming up, you see that USA on the front. It, it, you have, you pause for a second and understand what they went through for that, but what we appreciate with all that entails. So I'm just super excited for that and great job tonight, everybody, thank you.
Fortney?
Are you buying your daughter the jersey or grandpa?
Already bought.
Okay, good. Thanks, no other commissioner comments?
Great job tonight, staff. I know, I, I thought there was going to, there were, we'd have more of a presence for, for the project and discussion and kind of a change. And certainly understand a public comment and citizen concern, but it's a leap of faith. And so hopefully what they are asking for in terms of the school comes to fruition. But unfortunately, or fortunately, we have to put this plan in motion and order for that to happen. So hopefully it does. Vacaville American, yes, hopefully they continue on baseball. I think it's District, is it District 36? Yes, yes. And then I want to put a plug in for breakfast lunch program. The three sites, Markham, Vacaville, Town Square, and then Trower Neighborhood Center. So for those 18 and under can get free breakfast, free lunch at those three sites, so that's all I got. Oh, Nancy, welcome.
Thanks, Commissioner Vargas. Commissioner Lightfoot. Amanda? Ashley, pardon me. Vice Chair Rudy.
No, I'm good, see everybody in August.
All right, with that, we are adjourned to August meeting, thank you.